I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none. We do have some special recognitions. Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first one, I want to bring to people's attention that Mrs. Patricia Doyle, excuse me, she was a longtime English and reading teacher at Auburn Middle School, passed away on November 3rd. She was predeceased by her husband Leonard and sister Mary Troy. Patricia graduated from North High and studied at Clark in Worcester State Universities. She and her husband retired to Cape Cod where she enjoyed many years of golfing, fishing, and voting. Patricia leaves three children, seven grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. So in thanks and in memory for her years of service to the Auburn Public Schools, I'd ask for all to join me in a moment of silence in Patricia's.
My talks wouldn't come in the house.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to recognize the Auburn Middle School School Building Committee had its last meeting just a couple of weeks ago, and this was a long process. It actually went very quickly. We started back in 2011. We received approval from the town in 2013, and then the school opened in 2015. But during that time span, there were considerable meetings, both at night and during the day. So I'd just like to recognize the members of the School Building Committee that began and some that stayed right through to the end. So thanks to Lon Bowden, Jim Bonifiglio, Joe Fahey, Rainey Gibbry, Bob Grossman, Mark Imzy, Paul Maroni, Joe Miller, Bob Murray, Wayne Page, Mike Sampson, Jeff Slomsky, Bill Westerlin, and Kara Westerman-Murray. I also want to thank Joe Gagnon, who's not retired, Mrs. Worsbicki, as well as Mr. Casanova and Mrs. Jacobson, who also were members of the committee. So they did a great job. We're all very proud of the building that resulted. So thank you to all of them.
I had an opportunity to watch some of those meetings, and they were just excellent, especially when they had to call some of the contractors on the carpet. Yeah, they were just very well-informed. They were into it, and for that reason, we have a great middle school.
Agreed.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Agreed.
Appreciate their efforts.
And then a very surprising thing, but just an incredibly generous activity that recently took place. So Mrs. King, Janice King, our Director of Food Services, let us know that a young man recently visited Auburn Middle School, indicating that he wanted to pay off some students' negative lunch account balances. He wanted to help families of students who were struggling financially. So he paid off five students' negative balances, costing him $125. So it is his wish to remain anonymous. But I did want us to extend an open, and he wanted us to extend an open invitation to the Auburn community. If there is anyone who's blessed to have some extra money, to perhaps consider doing the same thing that he did. But certainly, as a district, we extend sincere thanks to him for his generosity, and to remain anonymous is really wonderful. So special thanks to him. I don't even know who he is.
Come on.
I don't. Anonymous is anonymous.
Do we have him on camera? When great things like this happen, you really want to know who the people are.
Yeah.
Because he's an awesome kid, whoever he is.
Do we have many other outstanding balances that if people wanted to help out?
Through the chair, we do. At any given time, we could have, you know, five, six, $700 worth of balances across the district. Wow. So these here that we're taking care of were at Auburn Middle School, and while I'm sure there was some variability in the amounts, they were probably somewhere in the vicinity of $25 each. So we do offer to families whose account balances get in the negative to make sure that they fill out a free and reduced lunch application, to be sure that if they do qualify, we want them to take advantage of that, those opportunities. But there are families who, for whatever reason, they may just be above the threshold, who do struggle to pay those.
So anyone else that wants to come follow, we could use their help?
We could.
That's wonderful. But he did that.
Gill, you have lots of money.
(laughing).
No, that's a great way to start off the meeting, though, really.
Yeah.
And we now move on to the Student Representatives Report. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through the past couple of weeks, the Auburn High School, as well as the school district in general, has been extremely busy. First off, the NIASC visit occurred, and that went really well. From what I heard, we got a lot of positive feedback from them, and they all, when I was talking to them through our interviews and the tours, they all felt that we had such a great school community and really congratulated us for having such an inclusive community. StuCo held their haunted hall and trick-or-treat for the little kids, and even though I couldn't make it to either of them, I heard that it was a really great time for my sister, who's on StuCo. The senior class, they held three fundraisers, the Disney Pancake Breakfast, the Yankee Candle, and the yard breaking fundraisers throughout the past couple of weeks. Those went really successful. I believe we still have about six yards left that we need to work on, but they spent most of their long weekend doing it. Quiz show, we participated in the Super Sunday WGBH competition. Our scores just came in this afternoon. I haven't seen them yet, but we did really well from the preliminary scores, where we got about 600 or 700 points. MaliUEN, we had the Brown University Simulation United Nations this last long weekend. It went really well. I was in what's called an ad hoc committee, so I knew nothing actually going into committee until I showed up, and that was really an experience of a lifetime. I know that the marching band finished off their competition season on Halloween after a rainout on 27th, and district play, I believe, is completely over. Boys and girls soccer made it to the second round, but lost, and girls field hockey, I believe, lost in the first round, but they all fought very good battles. And coming up for events that I know of so far, tomorrow is the Squickel Honor Bowl, where we're going to have, I believe, Grafton and Millbury coming in to compete. The chorus concert is this Thursday. The band concert is next Monday. All the wellness classes are getting Alice trained tomorrow and Thursday. And next Wednesday is the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Breakfast.
Great. Thank you.
Wow.
Any questions or comments for Ryan?
Sounds like busy two weeks.
Extremely.
Yeah.
Lot going on there. Excellent report, as usual, Ryan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And anytime you want to take off, feel free.
For once, I don't have a lot of homework, so I'm going to stay.
Really? You should have just said that.
Let that happen.
It's not going to get any more exciting than it's already been.
I don't know. Budgets are pretty exciting.
I would now accept the minutes of October 17th. Have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And we now move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with your permission, I'm going to go down and join the leadership team and start the presentations for FY '20 budget. Good evening, everyone, and first, thank you to the leadership team for being in attendance tonight. So as you know, the Auburn Public Schools is comprised of five schools. We have two at the primary, one at intermediate, we have a middle school, and a high school. But these buildings here represent the brick and mortar that is the Auburn Public Schools. But it is really the people inside of them, from the principals to the teachers, the cafeteria orcas to the custodians, the IAs to the ABAs, and everyone in between. It is truly a team effort, all focused on our students and their success. This extends also to the community, as evidenced by just about a year ago, we had over 140 school and community representatives come and give up a good portion of their Saturday to help to answer the question, how will the Auburn Public Schools continue to evolve to ensure our pre-K to 12 students are prepared to meet the opportunities and challenges of a changing world? What results, what resulted from that work is the new strategic plan that you approved just this past spring. As we do on an annual basis, we really rely on our core values, our mission, and our vision in answering our questions of what do we need to put into this budget to help ensure that our program continues to move forward? Because we've said, year after year, our students get but one opportunity at each of the grade levels that they will enjoy. Over tonight and tomorrow, you will hear from the leadership team members. It is noted on here, the schedule that they will follow. There will be strong evidence of commitment to the strategic plan, as well as the priorities that you have set and we have set as a leadership team. One of those priorities focuses on social-emotional learning. We just returned from the School Committee Superintendent Conference last week. And not only this year, but in recent years, the emphasis placed on SEL, or social-emotional learning, is ever-present, and the needs of our children require that we support them in ways even in addition to how we have in the past. So you'll see in budget presentations that we've actually put in for two SEL teachers that we're going to place district-wide. The reason we do this is we believe that we must provide opportunities so that all of our students can find success. It is, after all, what we are here for, our students. We believe that we need to work with our children in filmies to ensure that they are good citizens. Kindness and respect are things that really do matter. Some people call those some of the soft skills. We call those priorities in the Auburn Public Schools. Community service learning is something that we also believe strongly in. We believe that as a school district, we are very fortunate to have the support of our community, and believe that we too should give back in support of what they give to us. In providing opportunities for our students, one way we do that is through our athletic program. And as you've noted here, as noted here, the sportsmanship awards are ones that we are particularly proud of, where we love to see the kids get lots of W's on their scores. It's really about what they learn and take away from athletics as one opportunity. Mirroring that or supporting of that is our fine arts program that continues to excel year after year and really expand. And, you know, Ryan reported earlier tonight about the marching band, and we've heard that in the few short years that they've been in existence, how they really are excelling our theater programs as well. We have students in art and music being recognized statewide and even nationally sometimes. This happens as a result of supportive parents that we have, and we truly are blessed in the Auburn Public Schools to have parents who truly care and believe in partnering with us. We have dedicated staff who come to work every day believing, truly believing, that our children can excel and achieve at high levels if we do our jobs well. As noted previously, the community support that we receive is one that is much appreciated, and we give back to be sure that it really is a symbiotic relationship. And this work is all done in recognition of our amazing students and believing that they deserve nothing less than the very best that we have to offer them. So after my presentation soon concludes and the leadership team takes over between tonight and tomorrow night, I think we'll really breathe words, breathe life into Rosa Parks' words, which are, "We are not where we want to be. We are not where we are going to be, but we are not where we were." And we believe, as a district, that it is always about going forward. Continuous improvement, if we commit to excellence, we will get there, and it's worth it because this is our kids, and after all, we are Auburn. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lozay, who will lead off the, okay, thank you, read off the next one. Thank you.
Tonight and tomorrow night, as Dr. Brunel mentioned, you will hear about our many, many accomplishments across the district, but you'll also hear about the new initiatives that we want to bring to Auburn to make this even a better community. All of those, of course, are always focused on improving outcomes for our students. We are also extremely proud to be part of such a high-performing district, but as Dr. Brunel said, we're never satisfied, and we're always looking for continuous improvement. And I think that we can all agree that that's what makes Auburn so great. So as you know, and Dr. Brunel also mentioned this, that this work is never accomplished by a single individual. It always truly takes a team. So that is why we are here as a leadership team together to present to you this evening and tomorrow, our FY '20 budgets. On the agenda, the agenda for this evening is the central office budget, as well as the by-nights budget. We'll start with the central office budget, which includes the business office, teaching, learning, curriculum, people's services, facilities, and technology. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Worsbicki, our business manager, so she can give us some overarching context for our proposals.
Thank you, Dr. Lozay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to talk basically about the business and financial services and what we do as far as when we're sitting down to schedule our budgets. Factors which influence the budget, we expect that all revolving account revenues to be at the fiscal year 2019 levels for use as offsets throughout the budget. Transportation costs are another thing for in-town busing. They're already known as we enter into the last, in fiscal year '20, we'll enter into our last year of our contract with AA Transportation, so we do know our in-town transportation costs. Costs for staff movement into the next fiscal year are known, since contracts were previously negotiated for the FY '20 costs, so moving the step forward, we know what that will be. We take into consideration the retirement payouts for teachers who have notified us of retirement plans for fiscal year '20. We also factor the costs for teachers who have noted a change in their degree status for FY '20, so those are all things that we consider. We continue to participate in collaborative memberships, such as the French River and Assebit Valley Collaborative, which have a positive impact for us in purchasing supplies and services. And we continue to work with the town on our net metering agreement as part of the Rutland Solar Array land project, and so we continue to reap some of the benefits from that as Sources of funding offsets, we have the Circuit Breaker, which is the state reimbursements for students with disabilities. This revenue projection has been built into the budget at 60% for FY '20. We all know that that can change from time to time, depending upon what the state decides for funding, but we like to start with 60% because we know that it could go as low as 60. It has gone as low as that level before, so that's a good, you know, level to start with. Federal grants, we have Title I, Title II-A, and the IDA grants, and as far as we've planned for these revenue projections to be based on level funding, so that similar to what we have this year for FY '19. At times, they, you know, these grants have been kind of slightly cut, so we're planning on the basis of level funding, and so. Medicaid, the reimbursements, which are providing medical therapeutic direct services to eligible enrolled children. These revenues have been projected using the receipts from the previous year of what we've received. We do that from year to year. Medicaid is also another area where, down the road, we could see some increased revenues, but there's new programming starting, and we're working on that right now. That's an active approach that we've been moving forward on. School choice, reimbursements for enrolled students that are non-residents of Auburn, and these revenues are projected at level funding for FY '20 as well, the same amount. We're planning on the same amount of students that we have for FY '19, so. Any questions? Okay. All right. I'd like to now turn it over to Dr. Lozay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Prior to proposing or sharing with you my proposed budget, I'd like to share some of the accomplishments from FY '19 and highlight some goals for FY '20. In curriculum this year, we continue to refine our one to ZELA programming at grades pre-K to 5, where presently in our first year of implementing Elevate Science in our grades K to 5. We are also implementing a new health and opioid prevention program called Life Skills in grade 6 to 8, and we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase a variety of new curriculum materials for our intensive needs programs K to 12. This was in order to provide a more cohesive, in-sequence program for those students. As we all know, professional development is critical to building capacity within the school district, and this year, we continue our work with the Hill for Literacy across all grades, K to 12. We have also trained all our K to 2 teachers, as well as our grade 3 special educators and reading specialists, and enhanced score reading instruction, also known as ECKRAT. And this program provides systematic instruction and extensive practice in decoding for our young readers. We have also provided and will continue to provide training for all new curriculum materials that we have purchased within the district. Some of our expectations going forward in fiscal year 2020 is to focus specifically on the new social studies standards. They have been recently adopted, and we need to look at some new materials for that. We also want to expand our STEM opportunities, and we're really excited to be able to launch Project Lead the Way, which is really a curriculum that engages students in learning in kind of a play-oriented way, so it's very discovery-based. Some of the activities they might do is to have to design a car seat safety belt for a car. They do animation, and they also have some great coding lessons within that curriculum, so we're really excited about that. And also, as Dr. Brunel mentioned, social-emotional learning is high on our list. As I stated earlier, all of these accomplishments is a result of teamwork, and also is your support for this, so thank you very much. Going forward and supporting student teaching, learning, and curriculum, this is the proposed budget for 2020. System-wide professional development, which actually supports a variety of PD across the district, whether we send teachers out, whether we bring vendors in, our March Day, some of our summer work, $150,000. System-wide classroom supplies, $15,000. Substitute staff for system-wide PD is also $16,000. The PD for the Assistant Superintendent, $1,500. Supplies for the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, $2,000. Dues, $1,000. Publications, $500. District-wide textbooks, you'll see a significant increase at $100,000, and this is to help support the adoption of any social studies curriculum materials that we may need to align ourselves with the new standards. And then again, we continue to offer concurrent enrollment opportunities for our high school. We have budgeted this at the same $30,000. Terms of English learner program, the proposed cost, translation, has gone up significantly this year. We have more families that require us to translate documents for them, whether it's report cards, whether it's notifications from home, whether it's IEPs, so that's an increase there of $10,000. Teaching supplies, $7,500. Testing supplies, $800, and staff travel, $100. In addition, I am requesting a new position at the Auburn Middle School for one full-time English language tutor. When we look at the numbers at the middle school, we presently have 20 English learners who get direct instruction every day, and the minutes could vary from them needing 90 minutes of instruction to 45 minutes, or even longer sometimes if they come in as a new student from another country, so that they're a newcomer, considered a newcomer, and have no language proficiency. In addition to having to provide the direct support, PL tutors also have to monitor students for four years. After we decide that they're a full English learner because their proficiency has met the standard of the state, we still have to monitor and write a report every trimester on them. That means consultation with teachers, producing the reports. Some of them need to be translated to go home as well, so that's a large caseload, and I am proposing that we add one tutor at that school. So I thank you for your continued support, and before I turn it over to Mrs. Reedie, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just had one. Does the state contribute any money for staff development? No, not anymore. I know when they first started, they didn't.
Well, we have one grant, the Title II-A grant, which sometimes we can use towards professional development. A lot of our Title II-A grant goes towards our mentoring and induction program, but we try to get a piece of that for some of our new teachers, and we've also used a little of it recently for the Hill for Literacy.
But mostly, we're on our own.
Mostly, we're on our own.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Lozay, I have a question regarding the social studies text or materials from $25,000 to $100,000. How many grade levels does that cover, and is that actual textbooks, or is there digital learning involved there?
So we haven't, sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
So we haven't begun looking, but our experience in terms of looking at the ELA materials and the math materials, it's always a combination. It seems that there are textbooks, there are guided reading books, and then there's digital resources as well. So most of the programs that are coming on the market are pretty comprehensive. We already have the middle school presently looking at different materials this year to be able to maybe purchase some of those this year, but K to 5 will need to purchase theirs next year going forward, and when you're dealing with that many grade levels and the amount of materials that it involves, we've known that with ELA and math, it's always around $100,000 or a bit more, so.
Do we already have our eyes on something that's already been certified and aligned completely with the new standards, or is this investigative at this point?
It's still investigative. First, we want to kind of unpack the standards together as a committee, and then we'll go out and reach out to other districts, see if they're using anything new, have vendors come in and talk to us, maybe go to other districts and see what they're using. Sometimes it's nice if they've adopted something new to go in and actually observe them and talk to them about their implementation. So it's a fairly long process, usually takes us 12 to 18 months to complete.
Okay.
So it's thorough.
Great. Thank you for the answers.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a few moments to highlight some of our district accomplishments. As part of our strategic plan work around transitions, special education and guidance staff at Auburn High School are working together to review and refine practices that support our high school students in reaching their post-secondary visions. Unified sports at Auburn High School continues to thrive. As you all know, Auburn High was recently given the honor of being named a Unified Champion School, one out of 10 in Massachusetts. They were also named to the ESPN Honor Rule, being one of the top 30 schools across the country. We look forward to expanding our unified sports program to the middle school. Here in Auburn, as well as in many other districts across the state, we continue to see increases in students with significant social-emotional needs, from preschool all the way up through high school. We're very fortunate in Auburn to have two BCBAs, which are Board Certified Behavior Analysts, and an Assistant BCABA that's helped support our students with behavioral challenges across the district. As well as we have our bimonthly consultation with the child psychiatrist, these professionals provide an additional level, more in-depth and targeted strategies to help our most struggling students. As we look ahead to fiscal year '20, we look to supporting our co-teaching partnerships across the district by using specially-trained members of our Auburn staff as in-house coaches. And we also look forward to working with Special Olympics of Massachusetts to expand the unified programming into our elementary schools and preschool. We'd love to become a Unified Champion District. On this slide, you see the breakdown of what we have budgeted at this time to support the needs of our current students with disabilities, both in and out of district. Most of these costs are offset through the 240 Grant, Circuit Breaker, or Medicaid. Home hospital tutoring district-wide, you see a slight increase in at-home hospital tutoring support. This supports those students with significant social-emotional needs who may be hospitalized for a short stay by a physician. Contracted services, $165,000. There's an increase there due to costs related to our consultation providers. Psychological testing services, $10,000. Classroom supplies, $20,000. Homeless transportation, $25,000. Special education in-town transportation, $365,000. That's increased due to the contract that we have for our services. Non-public school transportation, $218,959. Need to put my glasses up a little closer. We see a little decrease there due to some students that will be returning to Auburn from out-of-district placements. Tuition for Massachusetts public schools, $12,000. Tuition for non-public schools, $475,517. Tuition for special education collaboratives, $271,481. Our ESY summer program for our students with significant disabilities, $38,000. And our beyond-the-school-day support at $10,000, that helps to support our students who need additional support, whether it be at one of the sporting events that they may participate in, or an after-school club, or a dance. Some students may need additional support, so that line helps support their support Any questions?
Any questions or comments? That $10,000 number at the end, that seems like a low number, considering the number of students that might need that extra help or accompaniment.
We actually have kept track of it over the past couple of years, and we're right about where we should be.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure.
Kids are becoming work we really want. Kids are becoming, we really work with our students to become more independent as well. We have our Rockets to Rockets program at the high school that provides a lot of that support as well, student-to-student, peer-to-peer, which really is great for the kids.
Oh, excuse me, I was just wondering about how many students does that budget support? Are we talking 175?
So students on IEPs currently?
Yes.
Currently, students on IEPs in the district, we have about 260.
Oh.
And that can fluctuate, you know, into nature tomorrow, we could find someone else eligible, or some students may be found no longer eligible as we go through. So we're right about 260 as of right now.
That's a good amount. I can see why you need all these services for them. You don't want them to fall through any cracks. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your continued support. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Joseph Fahey, Director of Facilities.
Thank you, Mrs. Reedy. Joe Fahey, Director of Facilities. As you can see, this is clearly, as Dr. Brunel stated, the brick and mortar. If you look at all of our buildings right there, except a little trivia fire, the high school is actually built out of terra cotta, so it's not truly brick and mortar, but there's a mortar panel. That being said, our goals are pretty much the same every year. They're to support the students through a safe and healthy environment, provide routine preventative maintenance, and capital improvements in all of our buildings. Accomplishments to date, I only have a limited amount of slides, but we can go on and on, but at our high school, we replaced the bollards in front of our high school with planters. We planted, and I believe the students from the schools are actually putting plants in, and they're about 750 pounds apiece, so clearly they're not, no one's going to walk away with them. We also, through the help of Mr. Scobie at Bay Path, we repointed and redid our front columns, and it was a great project, not only for the students at Bay Path, but also for the students of Auburn High School to actually see what Bay Path actually does. And I thought it was a great project that we did. We also installed a new power flame burner up in our boiler room. We have three boilers. We replaced two of our burners previously with the Energy Efficient Grant. Didn't qualify for the third burner, although that's our spring and fall burner, which kind of is our most important boiler in the building. So we replaced that, and in front of our building at our high school, we replaced our trees. We had four old sugar maples that kind of exceeded its life expectancy, and, you know, no one likes to see somebody take down a tree, but it was for safety reasons. We could have had an arborist come in and do some major pruning, but honestly, you'd end up having a bad haircut for the rest of your life. Some of them were just too far gone. So with the help of Rick Ringardt, Matt Bellhum from Bell's Lawn and Garden, the DPW, we replaced those trees with exactly the same kind of trees that were there. Those are sugar maples that you see there. So I think they look beautiful. Also, we re-lined our baseball field to take some relief off of our football field, and if you happened to go by during the homecoming, it was pretty impressive to see. You saw the football field being used, you saw the baseball field being used, the all-purpose field, you had Auburn rec doing their homecoming projects going on. It was a happening place. It was clearly a building that does not rest. So we're fortunate to do all that. At Packetchuck School, we upgraded the playground, we added a couple more pieces of equipment, and unfortunately, when you add more equipment, you have to add more real estate, meaning that you need to have a safer path for them to travel. There's a fall zone that you have to keep up, there's a length of travel, so we increased the size of that to accommodate the students up there. Completion of the solar arrays for the middle school and high school, that's where we're actually at the one-yard line, safe to say. Right now, that's actually in the hands of DOE-R for their approval. Once we get their approval, we'll move forward with that project. At Brenmore School, as you know, through the Green Community Grant, we replaced the steam traps last year. At Swanson Intermediate School, through our glass corridor, we installed radiant heat, upgraded the HVAC and the modules. And most importantly, the last one is install the exterior door locking system district-wide. That's the most important one. That's pretty much for our first responders, our police, if they ever need to get into our buildings, they could actually access any exterior door that we have in any of our buildings. Okay, our support costs. As you see, column to our right is FY '20, slight increase on our natural gas. Right now, we're locked in until half of next year for our thermals, we're approximately $6.30 a decotherm. Electricity, roughly about 17 cents. Our water, slight increase in our sewage, obviously, it goes in, most come out, is there. Our telephone, if you remember last year at our presentation, one of the charges that we took coming out of there was we wanted to see if we could reduce our phone lines, our phone numbers, which I'm happy to say, as I go through this presentation, you'll see a decrease in all of our telephone lines. And most importantly about that is we have two PRIs, which is very important, because if one goes down at a high school, it switches over to the one at the middle school and vice versa. And the nice thing about that is any classroom that we have in our district has 911 capability, so very impressive. Repair and maintenance, we're keeping the same, $95,000. And our custodial supply, as our business manager stated, that we do take advantage of our French River custosium, and we bulk purchase. At our middle school, we're not as fortunate as the high school with the natural gas. We have propane gas there. BTU-wise, it's a little bit less than natural gas, but based on the square footage of the building, it's pretty much right in line with what actually, what, they actually designed the building to be that. So last year, it took us a while to get all our bugs out of our middle school. Bugs, we didn't, I really should rephrase that, not bugs. We had a lot of HVAC issues where we really couldn't monitor it as well as we needed to, so that has all been corrected through the project. So we're hoping to see, even though there's a slight increase, that's just because of the dollar amount, but the gallons themselves, we should see a decrease. And we're still fortunate, we do have a big rebate program that we're dwelling away from when we built the school. We get credits for our electricity, but we still need to keep that number in there as a placeholder, because eventually, when that goes away, we're going to need to find these funds. Our water and sewage has gone down slightly, and again, our telephone, it's down a couple grand. Repair and maintenance has gone up slightly as our warranties, you know, our one- and two-years warranties have run away. It's a beautiful building. It requires, you know, a lot of contracted services and maintenance to keep it in the shape that it is, so a slight increase there. And again, our custodial supplies, we're pretty much level funding it through the French River. Swanson Road Intermediate School, there unfortunately, we don't have natural gas, we have oil, and we have propane. So we're hoping through the French River, by the end of the month, we should have a number on what we're coming in at. So that number right there could be a little bit high. We're hoping it's going to come down a little bit, but we won't know until the end of the Electricity, as Cecilia stated, that we do have the net metering credits with the Rutland Project. They're starting to fluctuate, so we're hoping actually, once our solar kicks in on our high school and actually at our middle school, we'll be able to transfer some of our net metering credits over to a couple of these schools that you should, that you see it actually increasing. Again, our water and sewage, pretty much in line. Our telephone dropped down, and our repair and maintenance is up slightly. Custodial supplies, pretty much the same as it was last year. Brenmore Elementary School, again, oil and propane that we have, slight increase there, but again, we'll know more towards the end of the month when we get that firm number. Electricity has gone down a little bit. A lot has to do with, we replaced, a couple of years ago, we replaced actually our electric heat to propane, so you see a little bit of a savings there. Our water, slight increase. We're hoping that it's going to be, come a little bit under that now that our steam traps have been repaired. Our phone bill has gone down. Repair and maintenance has gone up slightly, and custodial supply is pretty much the same. Packetchuck Elementary School, we have totally natural gas up there, a slight increase there based on the usage. Same thing with the electric. We're hoping that the terraformers from the Rutland Project will offset that a little bit better, but we feel that, you know, we'd rather be a little bit over than a little bit under. Our water, pretty much the same, sewage about the same. Again, happy to say our telephone has dropped down. Repair and maintenance, $1,000 more, and our custodial supplies are pretty much level. Central office, it's based off our oil prices right now. Our electricity, as you can see, the decrease there, that's off of the Rutland Project that we're fortunate enough to, they have credits for. Telephone has gone down, repair and maintenance has stayed the same, and our custodial supplies have stayed the same. District support costs, district-wide, new line that we were able to put into our budget a couple of years ago, building security, keeping that at 30,000. Equipment repair, keeping that the same at 10,000. Slight increase on the service of contracts, we're up 5,000 from that. Fire extinguishers about the same. Staff miles, 2,000. Truck, we have truck, and we actually have a van, that's $10,000 for that. And custodial overtime, really should put, that custodial overtime is really based for snow. And, let me go back. And that should, that should do it. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a question about Brenmore. Not to be funny, but what's going in didn't seem to be coming out. It was the only school that was a little bit different. What are we doing with the extra there?
Those are, the FY '19 are actually real numbers that we got from the water department and from the sewer department. The year before, we had, because we had replaced all the steam traps, right, we had a lot of water going in, okay? So we ended up getting, we applied for an abatement for that. So that doesn't show the abatement in that, but that's why that number is as low as it is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm not pumping anything out into the future.
Trust me, it all goes down the blackstone.
Oh, that's great.
If there's no more questions, that's.
I just have one. What's a steam trap?
Steam trap is, obviously, it's a steam system. It's on the end of each radiator that goes in the line, and if, picture, picture a ball in a pipe. So that ball in a pipe, once it gets hot enough, it either, it says, hey, I'm hot enough, let me stop the steam, okay? So it will allow it to close, right? When the steam traps get mucked up, I'll say, and plugged up, the ball doesn't move. So what happens is the steam will, you'll have too much steam going through, and we don't want Dr. Chamberlain getting hot enough as it is.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So that's the purpose of that. So what happens too, so the more steam that you use in the building, you bring in more fresh water. More fresh water actually deteriorates your boiler, so your life expectancy goes down, plus you're adding more water into your system. Now, the water department doesn't know that it's going into the steam system, doesn't care. It's just reading the meter.
Well, thank you. That makes it sound very important. I'm glad you explained it.
It really is, it really is.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joe.
Couple of months ago, I was here and spoke at length, some told me great length, sorry, too long, about some of our major accomplishments in this school, from this current school year. 2019 accomplishments on the screen primarily revolve around the pieces of software that I was here speaking, talking to you about the last time. Our transfer from Midas to Power School, integration of Schoology, the new special ed software integrated through Power School, a brand-new website, which I hope you've all visited, which now has an app, so if you look in your app store, you'll find an app that goes along with it, really nice. And soon to be rolled out, new student registration system. So all of those were huge accomplishments, took a lot of work, and have meant a lot of time for everyone involved, whether it's students learning how to use their new portal systems, or their new online classrooms, or teachers learning how to use their new tools such as gradebooks and special ed software, administrative secretaries. Tons of time has gone into making sure that these all work, and we're well on our way to having some really nice pieces of software that are really functional for us. I think for those of you that have used the portal, it's a big step up from what they are used to, and so that's been really great. We also were able to hire a new technical support team member, which has been fabulous, especially with all of this change that's going on, having another person to deal with the day-to-day problems that occur just from having so much technology in Auburn, which is a good problem to have, but still, we need someone there to address a lot of the issues that do come up. We were able to replace a server, replace a lot of computers in both Packetchuck and the high school, conduct a wireless survey of our high school, which was a phenomenal experience. We brought in a vendor to help us not only look at how it was set up, but take real intricate readings of the wireless signal levels, make sure that our coverage was there. We had high capacity and help us tune our system so that it was functioning as best that it possibly could. And that's important, because our wireless system is really at the crux of everything we do nowadays with the iPads and laptops and many of the other systems throughout. And finally, increasing accessible technology throughout our schools for students that may have challenges, the technology can solve, we're able to help those students with new and exciting pieces of technology. When we look at next year, a lot of what we're hoping to accomplish is rooted in what we accomplished this year. Really, we have so much change in our software that we need to take next year to really live in it, to spend some time to not only get to know what we already have in place, but continue to expand that to make it better. There's a lot more that can be done with Power School. There's a lot more that can be done with Schoology. There's a lot more that can be done with our school website, and we want to do all of that. So there's no need to rush in and bring in a whole lot of new initiatives, and we have so much work that we can accomplish just with what we have in place right now. So a lot of our expected accomplishments revolve around that. But on top of that, we do have some very important work that we need to do, primarily looking at developing a student data privacy plan, which is extremely important with more of our student data going online, and ensuring that we're protecting that data, that the vendors that we put that data in with are protecting that data, that our students' confidential data is protected while it's online. That's a very important procedure that we have to go through, and we're hoping to get through that this year. We're looking to replace the access points at Swanson Road. There's a large amount of technology there, a large amount of iPads, and some of the access points are some of our oldest, so we need to look at addressing that as well. Increasing use of Schoology for technology training inside the district, so how can we use it to increase training opportunities for our staff? And streamlining user accounts by single sign-on and L'app connection. Basically, that means we're trying to decrease the amount of accounts that our students have, so that rather than have an account for their math software, their English software, GetOnline, right, their email, we're trying to bring those all down to a minimal number of usernames and passwords. And to make sure that all of our software packages are talking to one another, so that we spend less time importing and exporting data in and out of packages, and more time making sure that they're running right. So those are some of our expected accomplishments for next year. When you look at our support costs, really, those last three lines are the ones that matter. Maintenance and contracted services, that. Maintenance and contracted services, that line reflects service contracts that we typically have on pieces of equipment. So that's our firewall updates, our backup system updates and service, our content filters, so students don't get to sites that are inappropriate. That's what that line represents. Those a lot, those numbers continue to rise, based on just these software companies, they all increase those, those support contracts every year. There's really nothing new in there that's just increases based on student enrollment. A lot of these are per kid, per student, so, so that's what that line's for. Computer software is the biggest line. My department, that line encompasses every piece of computer software, application, online license in the entire district, whether it's within the technology department, or teaching and learning, or pupil services. In some of the, in schools, all of those software, if it, if it costs to purchase a license, it's in that line. So we take a hard look at that line every year. Dr. Lozey and I looked at it this year, where we sat down and we look at all of those pieces of software, we look at the usage, and we make sure that it's not only being used, but it's being, we're licensing it for the appropriate amount of students. Potentially, we're seeing less usage, so we can decrease licenses. So that number tends to fluctuate every day, every year. There really isn't a lot of new stuff in there. As you can see by the numbers, a few small pieces of software that the Fine Arts Department asked for, but outside of that, it's pretty much status quo for us for next year. And then computer supplies went up by two thousand dollars, and that two thousand dollars we've put in this year specifically for accessible technology. We felt that we have such a need for that, and it had, serves such a great purpose for a population of our kids, that it made sense to have some money in there to purchase the apps and the licenses and some of the equipment that they need when it comes up. A lot of times, those are surprise needs. We don't, we don't know that we're going to need something. So having that extra two thousand dollars in that line just gives us a little cushion so that we can provide those services. So when we built this presentation, the five of us in a room together, we came up with this, this quote from Henry Ford, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is a success." And I think Dr. Brunel would agree that one of the benefits of, one of the highlights of working here is that we do stay together. We don't have a lot of change. We have a new, a few new faces in, in the audience, but for the most part, it's the same people that you're going to see here year after year, and we know each other, and we're able to work really well together. And I think our success is, is part of the fact that we're able to work together like On behalf of everyone that was standing up here before me, we'd like to thank you for your support. What we do, we couldn't do without your support, and not just your support, but every previous school committee that sat there has been extremely supportive of technology and teaching and learning, and pupil services, and facilities, and the schools that you'll hear tomorrow night, and every other department that we have. We couldn't do it without you. We, we really do appreciate everything you do for us. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
I just have one. Is the one district technical support staff member enough?
Um, right now, it is. I mean, yeah. I mean, adding another person was, was a huge help for us, and I feel like we're in a really good place right now. So when, when, when I don't feel that anymore, and I can make a solid case for it, we'll ask for another one, but we were happy to have her join us, and it's taken a lot of pressure off the entire department, and I think, you know, I think we're in a really good place right now.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to say one thing, you're thanking us for our support, but I'd like to thank all of you and all the teachers and everything for all you do, because you're Auburn. You're what, you're what makes the system great, and we thank you, all of you.
I would, I would echo Gail's sentiments. That's exactly what I was thinking. It's pretty easy for us to sit up here and decide, you know, on a budget, but we watch how hard that all of you work, and outside of your regular school hours, you know, it's not, it's not a seven-to-three job or an eight-to-four job. We see, we see all of you everywhere, at all times, every function. The last Halloween, Halloween party at the middle school, seeing all the teachers dressed up, you're just always giving a hundred percent, so it's pretty easy for us to support that.
Yeah, all we have to do is say yes to spending the money, so I mean.
We're good at that.
We're good at that.
And then back to town.
Yeah, we fight for it. We do.
But thank you for the report. It was great.
Great. Thank you. It's really hard with Google.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm Maria Garo. I, and this is Jenny Bailey, and we are the co-coordinators of the Fine Arts Department here in Auburn. And we'd like to talk to you a little bit tonight about our department and what we are envisioning for the future and where things are at now. We currently, at the pre-K through two level in music, have general music classes for pre-kindergarten at Auburn High School and Pakachog, where they get to explore all different types of musical concepts and different movement activities and games. We cross-curricular units with science in first grade and social studies in second grade, and, oh, I'm sorry. We realized we're on the second slide. Ah, there we go. Let's start over there. Excuse us. Our Fine Arts Department, we serve all pre-K through twelve Auburn public school students, and we have adaptive art and music offered at the K through five level. And art and music instruction for our pre-kindergarteners started back in the academic year of fifteen, sixteen, and includes up to the present time. Our staff includes seven full-time music educators and four full-time art educators. There is one music teacher at the K through two level, that would be myself. I do have, actually, share one class with one of my colleagues at the three through five level. We have two music teachers at the three through five level, six through eight, and nine through twelve, including Jenny Bailey. We have one art teacher per grade level distribution, so one K through two, one three through five, one six through eight, and one nine through twelve. And our pre-K art and music staff are shared, the positions are shared between different staff members. We have performing ensembles in grades three through twelve, including strings, band, marching band, chorus, aca rockets, and I think I'm in jazz band. We have a lot of wonderful art electives at our high school, and we often have our students perform at community events, such as the tree lighting ceremony, and our students also go out, off-site, and go to places like Eddie Pond. So I'm going to just kind of catch up where we left off. Our lessons at the K through two level are standards-based, we're using the Massachusetts State standards, and are incorporating the national standards, which were just recently approved. Our performance opportunities include our annual holiday programs, Memorial Day, the Festival of the Arts, STEM and Wellness, and we often will sing for our volunteers at the volunteer luncheon. And here's a couple of our performances, a few of our performances, Memorial Day, and the holidays, and volunteer lunch. Our visual art classes are for pre-kindergarten at, at the high school and at Pakachog, and include basic skills like cutting, color, and holding different art utensils. Our standards-based instruction includes methods and materials, techniques, elements of principles and design, observation extraction, invention and expression, drafting, revising, and exhibiting, and critical response. And our students have many opportunities to exhibit their artwork, school-based exhibitions. We have artwork everywhere at the K through two level. And we also have had the pleasure of having our students exhibit artwork at the Auburn Library and at the high school as well. And these are some examples of our wonderful K through two artists. Grades three to five music have, have been very busy the past few years, growing at Swanson Road. We have general music twice weekly, and our students learn instrumental music in grades four and three, and learn recorder in grade four, and ukulele in grade three. And grades four and five have a choral program, then honors chorus, and there is the grades three to five strings program, and our grade five band program, which are run by Mrs. Christina Crusoe and Ms. Megan Spideau, and they do a wonderful job. They participate, the students participate in the annual holiday programs and have other instrumental performances and choral performances throughout the year. Our strings program has shown a forty-eight percent increase in beginning students, those are our grade three students. So our strings program starts in grade three, and this was started by Mrs. Crusoe, Christina Crusoe, about two, three years ago at this point, twenty sixteen, so that'll be three years soon. And we have seventy-one beginning string students this academic year, so it is a substantial increase. Our string program now includes grades three to five, and will expand up to the middle school to grade six next year, because those fifth-grade students will obviously be moving on. And our offerings include cello, violin, and viola. And next year, Mrs. Crusoe said she's interested in making sure that some of those sixth graders get the chance to choose the, the bass if they wish. Of course, the bass is very large, so need to be a little bit bigger to play that. Performance opportunities, they've played with the Worcester Youth Orchestra and participate in the district's Stringapalooza, which is a lot of fun if you've ever had the chance to see it. Our grade five band, our enrollment is currently at forty-seven students, which, when you think about the number of students that we have in the fifth grade, is a lot of students in a pan. Students receive small group instructions, instruction weekly for forty-five minutes by instrument, so all of the trombones, all the flutes. Instrument choices include clarinet flute, saxophone, trumpet, trombone, and percussion, and new this year is French horn. We have two French horn players, so, and Ms. Bailey teaches our French horns over there. And the students in the band program have a variety of opportunities to perform, including all-town band. Grades three to five visual art, standards-based instruction. Mrs. Gail Abieska is our teacher at Swanson Road. She does a lot of cross-curricular work in science. She has had some wonderful lessons that she's taught. I wish she was here this evening so she could go in-depth about it, but they're doing some exciting things cross-curricularly in science and art in, at Swanson Road. The students at Swanson Road have had opportunities to exhibit around the community and at the school as well. Would you like to speak, six through eight, or would you like me to speak?
Sure.
Okay.
So we're very fortunate to have a comprehensive music program at the middle school, so we offer performance-based grade-level classes in both band and chorus. Band students have received group lesson instructions in grades six and seven. We're hoping for a return to that in the future. And general music has also been made available for grade eight students on different levels. So the middle school art offers grade-level classes, which align with the Massachusetts Art Curriculum Framework, and also some of the National Core Standards. These classes provide each student with exposure to a variety of media, artists, techniques, and philosophies of making art while exploring the elements and principles of design. The Auburn Middle School Musical continues to involve students across all grade levels. The Select Choir and Jazz Band are available to students looking for advancing musical challenges, and this year, we had a record number of eighth-grade students participating in the Auburn High School marching band as pre-freshmen. At the high school, with the support of Eric and Casey, we've been able to expand our music technology offerings to connect with our non-traditional music learners. So some of the new classes that we've been offering are Intro to Audio Engineering, one and two, Intro to Music Technology, and Music for Film, Games, and Television. So students are scoring for movies and TV, and they're designing and building video games. It's a cross-curricular collaboration with the Technology Department.
Wow. I bet they like that.
So here are just a couple of screenshots of some of the students and some of the software that we are using. So the Rocket Marching Band, I've been here before and talked a lot about the marching band, so again, thank you for your support of our program, continues to grow in numbers and in scope. We participate in seven competitions in two different circuits, the U.S. Band Circuit and the Massachusetts Instrumental Choral and Conductors Association. Competitive marching bands require custom uniforms, props, and flags, and are thematic in nature. They also have expanded sound amplification needs, and our larger numbers may require us to have an additional bus. This year, we had a guardian angel who drove a truck and a trailer for us, which saved tremendously in that area. But the more equipment that we have, the more resources that we need to have. So here are just a few screenshots from our show this year. This year, it was, the theme was haunted. As you can see, we have a giant crypt. It was all the dead coming back to life, and our custom uniforms and performers. So the Auburn High School Choral Program, the Aca Rockets and Chamber Choir provide rigorous musical opportunities for our advanced singers, and we've had a record number of choral singers accepted into the district and state-level honor festivals over the past two years. Our theater program, we've expanded our theater arts classes to now offer four different levels, so students can elect to take Theater One all the way through four, with our Theater Four students mentoring our Theater One programs. We've had added performance opportunities with a fall play, and our spring musical attracts larger audiences and a greater level of student participation, including many of our life skills students. So it's really a fabulous community-building event, and there's a screenshot from Mary Our high school art programs, we have several courses that align with the National Core Standards, and they are offered at a variety of levels, including studio art, drawings, painting, sculpture, intro to art, ceramics, and AP art. And this is some artwork from one of our art award winners at the state level. The age of our equipment, many of our instruments are starting to age, and if you think about the age of your car, when you start requiring more maintenance, the more you drive your car, the more work it's going to need. So school-owned instruments need to be replaced on a regular cycle. Many of our instruments are between twelve and twenty years old, and some are even older. So some of them, I think our oldest instrument is from nineteen sixty-eight. Despite regular maintenance, things do break. The older the instrument, the more frequently it will be in the shop and out of use for the student musician. So just a screenshot from a couple of our repairs. One of our Jupiter tenor saxes, and again, we buy really durable instruments. We buy the Hondas of the instrument world. Our Jupiter tenor sax, it's twelve years old. Last year, it was repaired six times, with the total cost of repair is at five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The Yamaha Barry Sax is also twelve years old, was repaired twice, and the total cost was three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Also, we would like to get into the habit of having a yearly ultrasonic cleaning on the instruments, which runs anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per instrument. Now imagine breathing into an instrument every single day for the course of a school year, and despite swabbing it out, next year, the next student inherits all of the Doritos and all of the gum and all of the.
Oh.
So, so we really would like to, to get into the habit of doing that. The technology has evolved. It's much, much, much more cost-effective than the old chemical dips of the past. So with our budget, most of what we are asking for is level-funded. However, we are asking for a slight increase in our band uniform budget to help offset those custom flags, custom uniforms, and some of the additional requirements for the marching band, and our band instrument equipment line. It says band equipment, but we're also hoping to use that to outfit some of our music technology courses. We're hoping to purchase some additional keyboards to be able to expand the number of students that can take our keyboarding class at the high school, to be more iPad-compatible.
And we also have the addition of the middle school strings as well, which will be our wonderful sixth-grade students. So our long-term goals for pre-K through five is that we have equal instructional opportunity to all pre-kindergarten classes in music and visual art at both Pakachog and Auburn High School. Our half-days, our full-days, all of our very small children. We'd like to expand our adaptive art and music classes for students of varying needs as well, so. So students of all kinds of backgrounds and needs. And the acquisition of new age-appropriate risers for Bryn Mawr and Packagog schools. There are risers made by one company that are very durable, very age-appropriate, safe, very rounded, wonderful corners that small children can be safe on. Our expansion ideas for the future. We do currently have a point-nine elementary position that we would like to hopefully, hopefully at some point, move up to a one-point-oh full-time. And the addition of a point-five general music position with an increase to a one-point-oh full-time over a three-year period. And that would be, that position would mostly encompass being at Swanson Road, would pick up general music classes, band instrumental, adaptive music classes, some of the pre-kindergarten at the high school, and the children's chorus, and the honors chorus.
Again, we are hoping as the string program feeds up to the middle school, ultimately, a one-point-oh position for the dedicated string specialist. We are also interested in exploring a full-time position at Auburn High School to provide greater opportunities in art, especially in the areas of digital media, graphic design, photography, 3D design, and animation. So, again, we're so grateful for your support. We're very fortunate to work in a district that values the arts program. So thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you.
And if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. So do you have one music and one art teacher that goes to three different schools?
Only for the pre-kindergarten classes.
So with travel, that doesn't seem to be too costing to the educators?
I don't believe so. I think we, you know, we are doing this for our kids, our students. And so I think that, you know, we want to just make sure that everybody is receiving the instruction and that everybody is, their lives are being enriched by music and art. So that's really what the most important thing is.
I've had Melcy and the smell stuck in my head.
I know, I'm sorry. I know, I'm sorry.
Ms. Kaufman, we'll just walk our way right there.
Okay.
So through the chair, I did have a question actually about the equipment. I have a budding saxophone in my house at the moment. But I don't think I quite understood, so our district buys all of the instruments, and then the students rent them from us? I mean, do the students need to...
No.
How does that work for that, actually for the high school band?
That's a great question. What we are looking at, the school-owned instruments are the larger, more cost-prohibitive instruments. A Barry sax is ten thousand dollars. So to ask a family to shoulder the load to purchase a Barry sax is, you know, unless the student is going on to major in music education as a Barry sax specialist, it's not something that they would commonly buy. A French horn is four thousand dollars. So the school provides the larger, more expensive instruments, which are vital to the color of the ensemble, bassoons, tubas. So, and if a student decides they want to specialize in them, then later, they purchase them. But it's just a way for us to have our balance ensembles. We start our students on flute, clarinet, alto saxophone, so that they can maybe try the tenor sax and the Barry sax, but they still have their alto to practice on at home. So, you know, trombone, they move up to F-attachment horns. Trumpets may go to French horn if they decide, or to tuba. So it's more for the larger instruments, also all of our mallet and percussion instruments. No one wants a marching snare in their house.
No, nobody wants a xylophone in their house.
So now, that's a great, great question. It's so that we provide balanced instrumentation without families having to shoulder the load of very expensive instruments.
Extremely expensive.
Yeah, no, great, thank you. That, that's perfect. And then I did, I guess, I was curious about the fact that we really only have one art teacher at Auburn High?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Wow, I'm impressed, but...
She works very, very hard.
She's a busy woman.
I guess so.
I can think of a few friends from high school that the art teacher is the reason that they graduated. You know, they weren't into sports or anything, and it does, it keeps them...
Well, I think the thing that is helpful, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, that's helpful for our high school art teacher is the fact that we do have a six-day rotating schedule. So I think that that, that definitely is, is how she keeps things going.
The trimester offers a lot of elective spaces. However, again, we would love to be able to expand especially to digital photography, media, 3D animation, all of that.
Yeah, absolutely, that's certainly applicable. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question about the cleaning. Is that something you'd like to do, or is that something that's being done currently?
I am doing it when I can. So if I have money left in the repair budget, I will indicate the instruments of greatest need. For example, tubas, that we found an apple from who knows in it. So generally, we do them over the summer. All of the students return school-owned instruments, and I send them out for summer repairs, if we can allocate a cleaning for them. But I would like to get into a regular cycle for them. Sometimes our instruments are not used. We have three French horns sitting on the shelf currently, but at times, we've had four. So obviously, the three instruments that sit on the shelf would not need the cleaning. However, the Barry saxes, which are played by four different students, require a greater level of cleaning.
It certainly would seem so. And students with their own instruments, is this something they might do on their own?
Yes, I recommend that all students have this done yearly, just to tweak, just like bringing your car in for an oil change and a tune-up. So it works better.
All right, thank you.
Hi, great job, by the way. The AMS Strings Program, are those all going to be rented, or are we purchasing?
They're currently renting.
Okay, so they're going to go through Jerry's or whatever to rent this?
Yes, yes. What currently they're doing. I'm not sure if there will immediately be a need for the purchase of one or two bases, but because we have children in middle school who are still growing, it will be difficult to buy a bass because they do come in quarter, three-quarter, half, and full-size. So it would depend on the height of the child, and if they've stopped growing. So I'm sure that would be something that the parents would want to rent.
Okay, all right. And you mentioned your guardian angel that carts stuff from place to place. Is that guardian angel disappearing? Is that a potential cost?
It's not something that we want to guarantee. Again, this individual was tremendously generous, and...
Because I'll load up my car right now.
So, you know, I mean, to ask someone to give up eight weekends, you know, our competitions are twelve to fourteen hours. They're all over southern Connecticut, up to New Hampshire, out to the eastern part of the state. So to ask someone to take that on all of the time is, you know, is a massive time commitment. So again, this year, we were very fortunate, and, you know...
They just volunteered?
Yes. Out of the goodness of their heart. We have, we have some very, very, very generous people in this district.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. I think that was it. Oh, sorry, one more question.
You sure?
Yep. I noticed something in here that said, in order to participate in certain competitions, they need competitive custom uniforms. Do we already have those, or are we hoping to get better ones so they can compete at different...
So, so this is where, this is where things get a little bit dicey in the competitive marching band world. You choose a theme show every single year. It's very much like doing a musical. So the costumes that we purchased this year, we will not be able to use for another six to eight years, until we come back with something that's in a haunted cycle. These are the Color Guard uniforms. So all of our flags were custom screen-printed. Some things, you know, we're looking at exploring the possibility of having adaptable uniforms, where they have like a simple bass, and we adjust the tunic every single year. And ultimately, we'll build up an arsenal of flags, so then we'll be able to go into our guard room and say, okay, so our show this year, well, we can pull this flag from two thousand eighteen, this flag from twenty twenty, and this flag from twenty fourteen, and be able to piece together a cohesive show. But we have to build our library, so to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We're also exploring having our booster organization support some of that as well, as we're trying to resurrect fame.
Yes. Yeah, it's a good idea.
It gets expensive.
It does.
Great, great questions. Ms. Kaufman, especially you, I was wondering why we were renting an instrument when the school owned all those instruments. But now I understand that piece of it. My other question is, the school, the rental instruments, aren't those cleaned by Jerry's? Is that something that the students need to worry about, or will Jerry's just clean it once every day?
It depends on what your rental contract has. I know Jerry's has a pretty extensive repair contract where they will cover an ultrasonic cleaning, especially like when you've paid the instrument off. I remember I rented my flute in fifth grade, and by the time I was a senior in high school, it was finally paid off. You know, and they gave me like a credit to have it cleaned and overhauled. So Jerry's is definitely a much better company in that. And they'll give you a yearly once-over, check your instrument out, make sure everything, all of the posts are aligned, and a good cleaning is done. Some are easier to clean than others. Anything that has a pad, like a clarinet, or a saxophone, or a flute, they're a little bit more labor-intensive. The brass, we'll have brass day, and we'll just fill up a bunch of tubs and take some snake's and... You know, wire, you know, pipe cleaner-type things, and some Dawn dish soap and scrub them out. But, but a tuba, that's really time-intensive and requires a very, very, very big tub.
And woodwinds, like Jenny was saying, woodwinds have pads and springs and all kinds of interesting little nooks and crannies in them. And those can be a nightmare to clean on your own. So, so having them professionally cleaned is much easier.
That makes sense. That's great that our kids are eating healthy and putting in apples.
Kill one of them at an apple, so...
I'm just saying what I see before marching band practice, I'm like, oh...
You should probably credit food services for that.
Well, that's what I was thinking. We should thank Janice.
Also, the trailer that's being used to move the equipment, is that owned by Auburn Public Schools?
Currently, yes.
Okay. And the truck also, and the guardian angel, who's, that's just a volunteer position?
Yes.
Not a position, but on top of what the angels are already doing?
Our guardian angel did use an Auburn Public Schools truck and trailer. And it worked out beautifully. We could not have asked for a better, better person and better equipment in that role. Like, like our student from earlier, I think this individual wishes to remain anonymous. So I'd like to just call them a guardian angel and just say a public thank you.
That's great, and I thank them as well. If that angel was not available, do we have other staff that we could possibly, if we can't find a volunteer, that we could give them a stipend to make sure that the equipment gets there? Is there a backup plan, and to give the angel some time off, maybe?
Last year, I drove the Ryder truck to many of the competitions, and I may or may not have done a thirty-six-point turn in a parking lot with it. So we have set up a rental contract with Ryder to be able to rent a fifteen-foot truck for when the truck and trailer are not available.
Excellent.
But we're looking to hopefully get some volunteers, parent volunteers, and people from the community to help us out with that.
And if our booster organization can gain steam, you go to these competitions, and some of these, some of these bands are coming in with their own semi-trailers. It's pretty unbelievable.
Oh, wow.
You know, it's a pretty impressive sport on a lot of levels. I don't think we're ever going to need a semi. Blackstone has a semi. They've had a semi since I was in high school. But many of these, they have a booster-owned truck and trailer, and have a parent, you know, or a series of parents that drive for these. So again, our program is only five years old. We don't really know quite direction, what direction it's going to take. It's, it's a little bit like Medusa, you chop off one head, and then you've got three others growing. And, you know, you just want to harness the energy and run with it.
Well, you, you do a great job with that. And I think that, I could speak on behalf of the committee, we're in full support. And we love what we're seeing. We love the excitement that we see in our own children, as well as all of their friends who are taking part in it. And not to toot my own horn, but I bought two mattress sets.
We appreciate that.
That may be a down payment on the keychain for the semi. Thank you for your efforts. It's the excitement that you all show that make our children excited about it. We appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Great presentation. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I am presenting tonight on behalf of Mr. Davis, who is at the high school, tending to a leadership program we have this evening for some of our kids. FY20 Auburn Athletics presentation, I will try and keep this brief. So as always, you know, the theme tonight has been about community. Certainly, Auburn Athletics supports our community in recognition for the support we receive from the Auburn town, townspeople. Excuse me. Some of the initiatives that you probably have heard before, but very repeating. We have a continued focus on community service in the athletic department. There are a variety of initiatives initiated by coaches and student athletes. Mr. Davis has an athletic leadership team at Auburn High School of, comprising of student athletes, who are captains or potential captains. Some of the activities that they participate in include raking leaves for senior citizens each fall, reading to students at Swanson Intermediate in the afternoons to help kick off literacy night, assisting the Booster Club with concessions throughout the winter season. We also have our students participating in the Klepto 5K. And we also have some students participating with AYFS in a couple of, well, actually, next week, right?
Next weekend.
Next weekend, yes. Some of our on-field accomplishments for the fall of twenty eighteen. Girls soccer and field hockey made it to the quarterfinals in district play, as Ryan alluded to earlier. Boys soccer advanced to the semifinals and lost a heartbreaker against Hudson in the final minutes. Boys golf participated in districts for the first time in a long time. This was their most successful season in a number of years. Boys and girls cross-country and cheerleading also competed in district play. And the football team participated in the second annual Top Cup game at Dennis Yarmouth. Recognizing the service and unfortunate death of Officer Sean Gannon, all monies raised went to the Gannon family and scholarship funds. Summer of twenty eighteen, we had between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy student athletes each week participating in the Bigger, Faster, Stronger program. It's one of the key components to our athletic success. Our overall record for the teams this fall was sixty-seven, thirty-three, and three, which is a sixty-five percent winning percentage, which is pretty good. As you've heard in the last few meetings and over the last year, we've come up with a very successful Unified Sports program. They're actually hosting their jamboree tomorrow night, and you'll be actually visiting with a few of our students who've been selected to attend various recognition conferences in Washington and in California. As you are aware, we were one of a hundred and ten schools with a Unified Sports program to be recognized by Special Olympics. Ten were from Massachusetts. And we were the only one selected as a national recognition school. We have about approximately thirty-five students with disabilities in their partners that participate in basketball and track. And tomorrow, Auburn is hosting the, I think it's the Second Annual Unified Basketball Jamboree at three o'clock at Auburn High School. So you'll be seeing some of our Unified folks here tomorrow night. They'll be hustling over from the, from the jamboree. In terms of budget, I'm just going to go through the quick increases. I mean, it's pretty much the same as it has been in years past. There are some nominal increases here. For high school transportation is up from sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars, primarily due to increased fuel costs and more travel. Game managers and ice time is up two thousand dollars from forty-four thousand to forty-six thousand dollars. Again, potential tournament play requires more ice time, which gets increasingly more expensive each year. Our game management and ticket takers and officials has been raised a thousand dollars, primarily because the MIAA and the officials have increased their game rates. See the same thing in the middle school officials. Again, MIAA increasing official pay rates from thirty-five hundred to thirty-eight hundred. Middle school transportation, fifty-two hundred to fifty-five hundred. Again, fuel rate increases driving that increase. And then athletic awards from eighty-five hundred to ninety-five hundred. We're using a different company because the company we used to use is no longer in business. So the company that we've been able to use most recently, their prices are a little bit more expensive than, than what we've seen in years past. So that's it on the athletic front. Happy to take questions.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Hanfield? No?
No.
You're going to make him feel left out?
No, no, that's, no, I'm good.
You sure?
Music took care of it. I'm good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
All right, we'll see you.
I'm going to sneak in a, I'm going to sneak in a private question. How's your daughter doing in college?
She's doing excellent, thank you.
Is she?
Yeah, academically, athletically, she's doing great.
Oh, good.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good to hear.
All right, moving on.
So thank you to those who presented tonight. We have our principals who will come back tomorrow night. But unless you have any questions, that concludes the budget presentation portion of the night.
Oh, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And feel free to hit the road. Ryan, it's up to you.
I'm good, Sil.
You still good?
Wow.
I had two tests today, so...
Wow, we're that excited?
I'm thinking you're neglecting to do your homework.
Yeah. You're using us as skip codes.
I was at that meeting until late, that's why I didn't have enough time to do this.
How are you? How are the girls? Good. Good! Yeah, they're good.
Good?
Yeah. Ronnie's finally got some free time, he finally sold my mother's house, so we're off to London there. It's going. Oh, yeah, very much so.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah. It was, oh, yeah. Talk to you soon.
All right, that was nice.
I want to apologize for being a little late today. My little dog wouldn't cooperate and come in, and I was the only one home.
So just wanted to share with you, I believe you've seen them at your seats, the Niask presentations, and thank you for making time to come and be interviewed and such. We drafted letters of thanks to those involved, including Mr. Handfield, Ms. Dunne-Hugh, the steering committee, the committee chairs, Mrs. King and Mrs. Denise King, for the work that they did. So those are signed by all of you, and we will get those to them, so thank you. Or they were to be signed, it can get passed around. The next item is regarding MCAS 2.0 perfect scorers listed in your packet are the names of the students really, for the first time of a test coming out, did just an outstanding job. So letters of congratulations went to each of those students, signed by Dr. Lozay and myself, and congratulations to all of them and their families for their tremendous work.
Great accomplishment.
It really is amazing. And then finally, the Assabett Valley Collaborative Quarterly Report, just as you accept those through the Southern Wester County, it is included in your packet. It was sent to you electronically, most of the items done through ABC. Our electronic has a tremendous amount of information. So it is my recommendation that you accept that first quarterly report.
I wouldn't stand that motion.
Make a motion to accept the ABC First Quarter Report for the 2018-2019 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So just wanted to remind you, our budget presentations will continue tomorrow evening. We will start at 6:30. We'll have the elementary schools, the middle school, high school, and I will conclude with a budget summation. So I think they did a tremendous job tonight, and look forward to hearing more great presentations tomorrow night.
Sounds great. And we now move on to new business.
Mr. Casanovaich, we recently received notification from Town Hall that at the Finance Committee meeting of Wednesday, November 28th, at 7:00 at Town Hall, the town will do its annual budget kickoff. Mrs. Worzicki or I will be in attendance at that, and we'll share with you what recommendations and guidelines they have for us.
Great. Seeing no questions, we will move on to teaching and learning, Dr. Lozay.
I think I'm going to skip the order, if you don't mind, and just go over the professional development while he's setting that up. I think in your package, you'll find the menu from our recent Professional Development Day, which was on Election Day, November 6th. We had a variety of offerings, every school had something different. We also had some things in common. Every school showed a video called Enough: Preventing Child Sexual Abuse in My School. It's approximately a 45-minute training for staff around the ability to really identify, like, boundary violating behaviors and to stop those kinds of behaviors sooner than later, so it doesn't cross those boundaries. The feedback on it was very, very positive, and most people really appreciated spending the time, looking at it, and taking a quiz, and getting a certificate for it. So that was great. We also had some training at the high school for all of the staff around supporting students with Asperger's in the classrooms, and I had very positive feedback on that as well. You'll notice that every school took some time during the day to look at MCAS, kind of analyze it, and put some action planning in place for going forward, and I'll talk a little bit about that during the MCAS presentation. We had science work going on, we had all of the new intensive needs materials. A lot of that training happened on that day, mostly WebDAi-based, so they were able to spend some time on that. And of course, all of our specialty staff, such as speech and language, they would take in online courses. We had our OT and PT sign up for some online courses. So it seemed like we had something for everyone on this day, and I think it was pretty full and successful.
Great.
It's coming up.
Shall we move on to business and financial and get back to the presentation, Dr. Lozay?
Sure.
Cecilia, everyone's favorite time of the evening.
I have, in your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report dated November 6th. If you have any questions, if you have any answer there?
Any questions, comments? Seeing none.
And along with that, I also have a budget transfer that I've included in your packet. We have some budgets that are transfers in this series, same series, which, for your information. And then I do have a small section of transfers between different series that I would need a vote for approval.
I wouldn't stand that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between series between the bar business manager?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And would we like to...
Watch pot. It just popped up.
Okay. Excellent. So we will go back to teaching and learning, very slowly.
It's not coming out over there, though.
Is this for tonight, Dr. Reynolds?
Yeah, this thing should work. Trying to figure out why the TVs aren't coming up. Uh-oh.
They're powered up. Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Okay, so that's a wrap, then?
It is, yes.
All right, we could postpone that until tomorrow night. There's no hurry on that. Dr. Lozay, did you have your hearts out on balancing that out tonight?
I did, I can wait. Do you want to act it out for us? How could I do this without it?
I would...
Do you have a whiteboard?
I would entertain a motion to adjourn, we have to get Ryan out of here anyway. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.
Good night.